The next item is item number 17, application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, docket number 15-3231, block 5116, lot 13, 136 Argyle Road in the Prospect Park South Historic District. A colonial revival style frame house designed by Carol Pratt and built in 1903. This is an application to alter the front porch, alter or replace windows, replace the roof, demolish a rear sleeping porch, remove a chimney, and demolish a freestanding garage.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Olivia, proceed. Preservation staff. The item is 136 Argyle Road, and the application is to alter the front porch, relocate windows, demolish a rear sleeping porch, and remove a chimney, and demolish a freestanding garage. 136 Argyle Road is located on the west side of Argyle Road between Albemarle and Beverley Roads within the Prospect Park South Historic District. It is a freestanding colonial revival style home built in 1903. And the intent of this proposal is to restore the original condition of the house as built by removing a number of historic alterations that occurred slightly after, or shortly after the house was built, including a southern extension at the front porch, a two-story rear sleeping porch seen here that has been altered, and the construction of a garage at the rear of the site. Other restorative work will include the removal of the existing asbestos shingle cladding at the exterior and the installation of wood shingle and cladded cladding, also the removal of asphalt shingles at the roof and the installation of slate shingles. And as part of the re-cladding of the house, exterior insulation will be added to all façades. All of the original wood windows are intact, and they include double hung windows with decorative diamond patterned muttons, fan light niobratt windows, and stained glass windows. And the proposal entails relocating and reusing just two of the stained glass windows. And Jeremy Shannon of Prospect Architecture is here to walk you through the details of the proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board and members of the committee. Olivia just gave a good overview. We have many--
Name for the record, please.
My name is Jeremy Shannon--
Thank you.
--from Prospect Architecture.
Okay.
So we have about 10 points to go over. Basically, we're trying to give this house a nice restorative makeover from some bad renovations that have happened in the past. The main elements, as Olivia mentioned, were that we have a couple of windows to replace and relocated, so we're not actually removing any permanently. We have a sleeping porch. We have a sleeping porch here that's in the existing building that was done in 1912 that we're removing, and so this is what it will look like once we remove it. We have an extension on the existing porch, which we go back to the front facade here. This was added in 1912 after the house was built, and so we're going to restore it back to its original look, so it actually has bilateral symmetry again. We have the asbestos siding that was put on that's all around the building, and so we're bringing back shingles on the upper story. And we have a kind of a 10-inch skirt that's going along here, and then we're going to have the siding on the lower portion of the building. What's the exposure of those shingles? It looks awfully tall in the drawing. I can go to... So we have here, our exposure, I believe, was six inches. Yes, so we have a six inch, so three by six, the exposure is six inches on the shingles.
Okay.
We also have a chimney that's disrepair in the center of the building that we're actually, as you can see here, that is no longer needed for an interior kitchen space. That's going to be being removed, and to keep that same corbel look of that, we're going to actually extend this chimney up because it's too short anyways for fire safety, and then put that corbel look on that chimney, so it remains that historic look. The... We are actually going to put decorative awnings on the top floor, and I'll have a slide later. This is showing it without the awnings on, so you can see what the windows look like, but we have a slide later that shows the awnings. And then we are repairing the sidewalk and driveway, as well as removing the garage in the back of the house. So this is just showing the front of the house as it currently stands, as Olivia was showing, some of the angles from around. As you can see, there are many points that you can actually see kind of clips of the And then across, this is across the street from it, and this is actually, this house is a nice example of some of the things we're doing at the porch. We basically have the lattice work underneath to be restored that's currently just asphalt shingles right now. And then this kind of double bend look of the siding and the shingles above. So our house is directly across from this one. This is ours. So in the window reconfiguration, there's an existing window here, which is kind of our, you can see a little more clearly on your pamphlets, but it's A1 is how we titled it. And so we're removing this window, putting shingles across, and then that window is being relocated to this location. Uh, sorry, to this location here.
Over here.
Correct. Sorry, that's in the rear of the building. So we're going from the side to the rear. And so that's an existing stained glass window that has a lot of character. We definitely want to keep that in play in the building, and so we're moving that to locations more appropriate for the inside of the house.
Just to clarify, the porch does not wrap around anymore, is that correct?
Correct. And it didn't really wrap around, they just extended it past so that they could create a new entry under the driveway.
Thank you.
And so what does the north side elevation face now? Is it facing the street?
No, this is facing the, the north side is facing the side, one of the neighbor's houses on the side if we go back to the building. Right? So this is facing this house, which is definitely not a keeper. So in the other windows that we're reconfiguring, with this sleeping porch going away, we have a door that was cut into that one, that sleeping porch was done in 1912, and then we have a window here. This window here, we're actually shifting to this new porch area, a new entry configuration. It's a smaller, it's a smaller window than the one that we're removing from here, and I think I have that, yeah. So this, you can, you can't really see it on this, but you can see it on your handouts, but the existing window that was here is three foot five, and so we're actually going, feel that architecturally speaking, it has a better balance on this porch at the lower sill, and then this window that we were relocating has a, is seven inches deeper, and so we'll get a little bit more space there. This is a little redundant, so I'm going to just move to this slide. So in this slide, you see that we have the existing single pane divided light window. We're proposing to do a new marvin, single pane divided light window back.
Single pane.
Single pane, divided light. And then the dimensions that Marvin can create are very similar to what was there, just a quarter inch off of what--
On that, it looks like you're showing a clad, is that a clad window? Because it's not showing a hatching in the outside trim. Is that just right here?
Yeah.
Is that a clad?
No, it should be hatched.
Okay.
Sorry, it's just wood.
Okay.
And then we have the, for reference for when we order the windows, we have the sizing that's measured out. And the siding, so the asbestos siding that's there now basically is on top of a felt insulation, homizone fiberboard, and then there's the old shingles in, that are still that were put on top of, and the slide next to see why they put them on top. And then what we're planning on doing is adding two inches of rigid foam insulation to the building. We're doing dense pack cellulose within the cavity, and then we're adding the new shingles in the top and the siding down below, and we're creating this little skirt that's going to have a 10-inch decorative belt below it. This is just kind of a cross section showing what's there now, and how this will look and how it's lining up with the trim on this lower window.
In your research on that one, going to top right--
Correct.
It looks like the trim is sucked back about two and a half inches within the siding, right? Am I reading it wrong?
Uh--
Looks like the top molding is about two and a half inches set in from the, where's the--
Correct.
There's like a little flashing piece on the top.
Yes.
Is that your experience, historically, the way they would do it?
No, actually, the way you pointed out in the drawing error, the way that we are intending it to be done is the way it is here, which is there is basically like a one-inch extension of the jam that comes forward of the, forward of the trim, instead, sorry, in place of a casing. It actually comes forward there and doesn't actually call out a large case opening. And then the rest of, surrounded around the window is deeper inside of the window. Make sure we correct that on the section, because there should be a double line right So then when we expose different areas, this is what we found. We've kept searching to see if there was any area that was in good shape, and obviously it was not. The color scheme here, kind of looking at some old colonial revivals and looking in the neighborhood, and so this is the color scheme. Obviously, it's hard to tell in this format. Printed a little bit better on those, on the handouts. And we basically have a, an approach where the trim is all this lighter color. We have darker band, the shingles are one color at the top, and then we have, let's see, the lower body with special grays, and then a grayer on the bottom. And looking back to kind of one of the other houses and some of the other houses in the neighborhood, here we kind of see some of that too. You have some of the lighter bands, the darker bands, so whether it would be keeping, definitely This is the door that doesn't currently exist on the back of the house, and so this is the suggestion for that door. Then in 1912, this is kind of the plans that we were able to find that showed three different changes in the house. They were the back sleeping porch, the side extension, and, and this is the stairs going down from that that were new, and then also the garage off the back of the house, in the back of the backyard of the house. So the extension here, we're, this extension here we're planning on removing and then returning it to what the other side looks like that is in line with the side of the house and then has the slight eave coming over there. And then this is an example of where there currently asphalt shingles all the way down here, and so we're restoring it with shingles here and then doing the lattice work below. The sleeping porch, from a distance, has, you know, may be an interesting look, but it's, as you look at close to it, it's in horrible condition. It was not done as per the architectural drawings that actually are shown, and so it has these skinny little supports that are collapsing, rusting through. And so we're having that removed and then putting back this space and creating this porch in the back, where they can make a much nicer finish to the back of the house. This is underneath of that extension. The garage in the back, this garage was probably put in when some others were being put in around that time, but definitely wasn't original. It had this also to make it look for bigger cars, extended a couple of years after they put it in, which hasn't shown up in the plans. And it's in pretty, pretty bad condition, and we don't feel like it's worth putting money into a bad renovation, a bad element as it is, and so the client's, the client's proposal is basically to kind of create green space from it and make it a garden space and return that to the way this aerial photograph shows this neighborhood. And our building is right, I believe, right there. And, but as you can see, this whole neighborhood, there is not a garage neighborhood from when these were all built, and so we'd like to restore it all in keeping with that 1903. This is showing the chimneys and how we're relocating them, removing one and fixing the other, building that one up. The awnings on the front, and we have an example of the cloth that, if anyone wants to look at the material, and it's going on these upper windows. Sidewalk and driveway. In the driveway, one of the nice things that we're doing here is to suggest a ribbon driveway, so you get some green space, taking back that zone, so this could actually have bearing, they need extra space, but the idea is that it won't be all paved and have a lot run out to neighbors as it was before. And then the final thing that we have here is the roof, and so we're planning on putting back a, or putting in shingle roof on the whole house, which will have, and on the porch coverings. And so this is the, kind of the multicolored approach that we're retaking with the shingles on the roof. And we've found many examples in and around this neighborhood of the multicolored shingles, and so we feel that it is keeping with the neighborhood and precedent in the area. This is the texture.
So just one question. So the main front facade, you're not doing anything to the front facade that, other than the changing of the exterior materials, right?
Correct.
You're not removing any, um, like porches or--
The front doors--
--porches or--
Yeah, front doors are original.
That, that photograph.
They're shading off the left side of the front porch. So the only thing we're changing on this is, you know, adding the exterior cladding, and then we're basically cutting this back--
Shortening it, and make it symmetrical again, yeah.
Right. And then all the, in doors, windows, those little things.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about your extending the chimney, how it's just kind of, it's the necessary height, I assume, or?
Sure. Yeah, because of the height of the peak here, we needed to actually, this wouldn't meet code for potential fire damage, so we needed to actually raise that up anyways, and so why not do the corbel like, while we're at it, make it kind of as a little historic build to it?
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Is there testimony? No testimony? Any community work? No, nothing. Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much. Discussion?
Well, it's an incredibly complete and clear presentation, so I'm getting spoiled. So I appreciate that. I think actually, the, well, for one, the proposed change to re-clad the building in the shingles and remove what seems to be a really inappropriate original material or past material is really welcome. And I do think that all of the interventions seem to be in an effort to bring it back to the integrity of the original design. It's a very com, its original design was compact, very clear, very kind of elegant, symmetrical detailing, and the removal of that side porch in particular really does bring back the integrity of the building. I actually think this is an extremely sensitive proposal, and I'm, you know, just surprised it's not one that's suggesting that it needs to add a 2,000 square foot--
Living room to the back.
So thank you.
Okay. Michael?
I think that the, I think that the proposal is very sensitive and very, it's clear that you've done your homework in the field, looking very carefully and thinking about a lot. All I would suggest is that the drawings don't exactly rise to that level, and, for instance, every single shingle that you show is twice as tall as your detail says it is. And unfortunately, I know from many, many, many sleepless nights and angry clients that if you don't draw it right, they'll build it the way you draw it. So please, 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 work with staff and make sure that that is done correctly. Also, the issues with the trim that I was referring to, I think you really should look at the trim generally, and I know that your heart's in the right place and your research is in the right place, just make sure your drawings follow them.
Joan?
I could support this. I too think it's a very sensitive proposal, and it's been done very carefully with a great deal of respect for the house, and I can support it. And I can also support the removal of the garage, because I think the garage is so small that it kind of, was built so long ago that it really doesn't house a modern day car anyway, and a beautiful garden there is something that I don't think anybody would argue with.
Michael?
I'm a little troubled by the demolition of the garage, because it is an important early feature, you know, these, the site cast blocks that were done from Sears and Roebuck's molds are a relatively significant technology change. That said, I think in this case, because it really, it's not a contributing feature on this site, and the work that you're doing to the house is going to so overshadow anything else that I think in this particular case, I can approve it. And I think that everything that's happening to the house is exemplary. I'm very much in favor of it.
I only wish we could see a rendering of all these gorgeous paint colors and how you're going to use them. I support all the changes that you propose.
Yeah, I think it's a great, a great application here. The intent, obviously, is to restore this house to its original condition, 1903 original condition, and you're doing it in an admirable way in all respects, including, I think, adding insulation. They didn't believe in that in those days. I think now it's reasonable to think that we should, and I think that the slight increase of dimension is not important at all here. But I'll echo Michael's point about being sure that the trim detailing is correct, even as you've added some width to the wall thickness. Because you've made a decision to go back to the original and removing many elements that were built only nine years after the original, so you could have easily, if you'd wanted, made a very literate defense of the retention of all those elements as part of the history of the house, but because you've gone back to the original, allows me also to think that that also is very, the very reason why the added garage can easily be eliminated from that same sort of philosophical point of view. Adding a garden where there's a garage, I think you don't need a philosophical point of view for that either, but it's a double win.
Roberta?
Essentially, the intent is to go back to the original, I'm questioning that when the windows are replaced, if that's part of it, I'm not sure, because the front is doesn't matter, it's only on the sides. The rear, I guess it is, and the other side, I think there's another, there's, the rear and the one on the other side, still in terms of the window replacement looks odd, so I would say that's not really part of what it was, and we'll get something to see as possible to look at here in Fort Dallas. I'm sure that you don't really see the rear on the street, but still, I would say to look at it. But otherwise, I think it's true.
Yeah, I, I think it's almost like a rescue house, looking at some of the condition of it, and appreciate the fact that the owner has decided to really do this with it and bring it back to its original condition. I think that the additions that were made did not really add to its quality, so I'm very comfortable with removal, even though they were early additions of the facets that have been discussed, and it was a very, you know, thorough presentation, and the research was well done. As far as the garage, I am quite familiar with this neighborhood. I know someone who lives about a block from here, and it's a neighborhood with large houses and lots on the street with plenty of on-street parking, and I think the garage is not so significant a feature that I would want to see it retained in the circumstances, and it's certainly not really necessary, I think. So I feel that this is a very tasteful and appropriate renovation, and I'm pleased that it's going to be preserved, and I agree with other speakers as to, obviously, care to be taken with the details, but as well, it's a, it's a great project.
Okay. Are you close to hearing?
In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness for 136 Argyle Row Road in the Prospect Park South Historic District, the application is to alter the front porch, alter or replace windows, replace the roof, demolish a rear sleeping porch, remove a chimney, and demolish a freestanding garage. I recommend approval, finding that probes have revealed evidence of historic wood shingle cladding, and the historic wood shingle beneath the modern cladding is in a deteriorated condition and cannot be salvaged. That the proposed installation of new wood shingle and cladded cladding will help return the house closer to its historic appearance. That the proposed plain pattern of installation for the new wood shingles is based on physical evidence of the historic shingle pattern. That the material palette of cladded and shingle siding relates well to the materials often found on historic houses within the Prospect Park South Historic District. That the proposed installation of exterior insulation will result in a minimal increase in exterior wall dimensions. That because the house is freestanding and features projecting ornament and eaves, the increase in wall dimensions will be imperceptible from the street and will not adversely affect the proportions of the facades. That the proposed insulation will allow for passive heating and cooling in a minimally intrusive manner. That the stained glass windows to be relocated are not located on the street-facing facade. That the windows will be restored and reused in new or modified window openings at the rear facade. That the former window opening on the north-facing side facade will be patched and clad in the proposed wood shingle cladding. That other existing stained glass windows will remain on the north and south-facing side facades. That the removal of the door at the second floor of the rear facade and modifying the opening to accommodate a window will not eliminate any decorative features from the facade. That the proposed double-glazed window will match the extant historic windows, which feature a decorative diamond-shaped mutton pattern at the upper sash in terms of configuration, operation, material, and finish. That the details of the proposed double-glazed window, including exterior applied decorative diamond-shaped muttons with a spacer bar, will closely match those of the historic windows. That historical documentation indicates that the original porch spanned only the width of the house. That the materials, dimensions, and details of the restored porch, including railings, columns, roofs, and decorative rafters, will match those of the existing historic porch. That removing the southern porch extension will restore the symmetrical composition of the facade, which is characteristic of the colonial revival style. That documentation reveals the sleeping porch to be in severely deteriorated and unsafe condition that warrants its removal. That the sleeping porch, which is a significant historic alteration, appears to have been altered with the removal of the first story. That the construction of an enclosed porch at the first floor will restore the location, volume, and general massing of the original rear entry vestibule. That the rear chimney is not visible in conjunction with the front facade. That the removal of the chimney will not-- That the removal of the chimney will not detract from the significant architectural features- It's this one. It's here.
It's somebody else.
Oops. I don't know how to say it.
I realized it was after I started.
Reject call with message. How do I do that? Yeah, there I go.
So for the wrenches.
Sorry.
You're on video.
That the sleeping porch, which is a significant historic alteration, appears to have been altered with the removal of the first story. That the construction of an enclosed porch at the first floor will restore the location, volume, and general massing of the original rear entry vestibule. That the rear chimney is not visible in conjunction with the front facade. That the removal of the chimney will not detract from the significant architectural features of the building, and that the remaining front chimney will be restored to match the corbeled brickwork found at the rear chimney. Don't say anything. That the garage, with regard to the demolition of the garage, the garage is not an original site feature. That its removal will restore the openness of the original site plan. That the utilitarian materials palette and design of the garage do not relate well to the historic materials palette and style of the house, and that its removal will not detract from the significant architectural and historic features of the house or the Prospect Park South Historic District.
Second, all in favor? I oppose. Approved, thank you, thank you all.